The meeting of the Town of Mendon Select Board will come to order. This meeting is a remote-only meeting, which means the public body is meeting electronically only, and consistent with the temporary provisions of Act 1, there is no designated physical meeting place where the public may attend. Please note that while we will strive to provide means for those attending remotely to participate in the public comment period, there may be technical difficulties or reasons that otherwise prevent or interrupt remote public participation. If a member of the public or the public body has technical difficulties accessing this meeting remotely, please alert us by emailing mendonclerk@comcast.net. If a technical difficulty such as the public being unable to participate occurs and cannot be resolved, we may continue the meeting to a date, time, and place certain if necessary. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting that are not unanimous will be done by roll call vote in accordance with the law. As required by the open meeting law, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance of all members participating in the meeting and have those members attending remotely identify themselves to ensure that they can hear and be heard throughout the meeting.
I'll start. Larry Crisell, Chair of the Select Board.
Val Taylor.
Beth Bridge.
Nancy Gondella, Acting Clerk for tonight.
Lisa Brooks.
Brett Bagley.
Brian Gates.
Carol Gates. Thank you. I think that's everyone.
Thank you. As we go through, after each agenda item, we'll give the public a chance to speak on that agenda item. And if you wish to speak again, please identify yourself for the minute. First order of business is add or delete any items through the agenda. So I have no items to add or delete. And I'll reach out to the Val and to Seth to see if you want to add or delete anything on the agenda.
I have nothing.
Larry, I have nothing to delete.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wants to add or delete an item from the agenda?
I asked to add a item almost two, over two weeks ago.
That can be done under Public Comment.
No problem.
All right. Anyone else add or delete to the item, or add or delete to the agenda? All right. Seeing none, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Second that.
Third that.
Okay. We have an agenda. I'm waiting. I gotta call the vote. We have a second. Wasn't clear. Val, did you second or set?
Um, I think I did.
Val did.
Yeah, we'll leave it at that.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Under announcements, under A, we have our town meeting candidates for this year coming up in March, which is only a few days away. Chris Crisones is running unopposed for moderator. Seth Bridge and Lisa Brooks are running unopposed for two separate select board seats. And write-in candidates are accepted for all offices on the ballot. The next item, under B, there is a part-time opportunity for zoning administrator. This is a part-time position at eight hours per week. Please submit resume and letter of interest to Sarah Tully at mendonadmin@comcast.net. Under C, there is a volunteer opportunity for the Planning Commission. The Mendon Planning Commission is seeking two new members. The Select Board would like to thank Gary Seeler for serving on the Mendon Planning Commission. Mr. Seeler is not seeking reappointment in March. Also, information for the Municipal Energy Resilience Program. We do have an energy committee. It's kind of a spin-off from the Mendon Planning Commission. That's Terry Crisones, Justin Lindholm, and Gary Seeler. I'll put this in Terry's box to see if something they'd like to do. They can submit a form and become part of the new statewide Municipal Energy Resilience Program and the $45 million that will be awarded to help reduce municipal building energy usage, operating costs, and greenhouse gas emissions. The new deadline is Friday, March 10th, 2023, to get the inventory and priorities back to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Existing buildings owned by cities, towns, fire districts, and all other municipal units are eligible for this program. School districts are not eligible. Potential projects include battery backup, energy storage, weatherization, thermal improvements, and fuel switching in municipal buildings and facilities. No local managers required for this funding. Under Administrative Matters, we had a couple changes that you received regarding the numbers. The warrants have gone out ahead of time for you to review. So at this point, I'll make a motion to approve orders for $22,316.89 and payroll for, this is January 23rd, 2023, payroll for $12,018.8 and the last one is for $10,886.62. Looking for a second.
A second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The minutes for our last meeting, January 23rd, 2023, were sent out ahead of time. Had time to go over those. I've seen nothing for corrections. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on January 23rd, 2023, as presented.
Second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes of January 23rd, 2023 are approved. Next item is Public Comment. And again, I'll ask you to identify yourself. This is the time to make comments. So let's see who wants to go first. Nancy, you're kind of in control of this.
Well, Brian said that he has a comment, so let's let him go.
Afternoon.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
How's it going?
Good.
So I have two things. First thing is, I was gonna ask Val, what's the status of Pascarillo's driveway? I knew we were supposed to do something last summer. The town had given our specs on things to do, but nothing ever got done. Nothing still done. I know you made another resident. You said you were gonna find them and put a time constraint on them. What are we gonna do?
I don't know.
Say again?
I don't have any update on Pascarillo's driveway.
So is it gonna get to go forever, or are we gonna have a time? That's what you made the McCulloughs do. You told them we needed to have a time constraint, otherwise it would never get done. You have to find them or hold them to some sort of, you know, standard. You held them to it, but you didn't hold my neighbors to it. Now nothing got done. The driveway's still getting washed down the road.
Larry, did we ever have an update from Bill on that? How was that left off with Bill?
Concern for the town is if the driveway is damaging the town road. Bill has indicated that he hasn't seen a problem with it actually damaging our road. That's our only concern as a town. I know a contractor, a contractor went and looked at it. It seemed like there was some kind of confrontation. He had a down payment, and he returned the down payment, and is not going to do the project.
So the town had given the Pascarillo specs they had to go by?
No, the town does not get involved, and Seth can help me with this, getting involved with designing.
I saw the paperwork from the Pascarillos.
If the driveway is damaging or doing something to the town road, and that falls under the Road Commissioner, not the Select Board.
The Road Commissioner had given them a spec. They had to do three feet of riprap and such on. Nothing ever got done. I saw the paper.
I'm not aware of what the Road Commissioner has designated for that driveway.
It was from Sarah Tully. It was mentioned at a town meeting that was recorded. You were there.
I have no information on it.
So the second thing is, the second thing I want on the agenda ASAP is...
Second thing?
Yep. Is for you guys to read the Town Amendment Policy Regarding Conflicts of Interest and Ethical Conduct, signed into by Dick Wilcox and Scott Bradley on June of 19. 2019.
I want that read out loud.
I'd like it read out loud, and you guys can figure out who did what, because you guys all have had conflicts of interest and ethical conduct that needs to be addressed in town.
Can you run that by me again, Brian? You said June 2019.
You don't know about that, Larry? The Town Amendment Policy Regarding Conflicts of Interest and Ethical Conduct? I actually gave a copy of that to Nancy almost two and a half weeks ago to put on the agenda at the last meeting.
Yeah, I don't know anything about June 2019. I have no information on that.
I have it right here. We sent a copy of it to you through Nancy.
Yeah, anything that has anything to do with not a current Select Board member, but a member of the previous Select Board, we have no comment on that. They are no longer on the Select Board.
It doesn't matter. It's a policy regarding conflicts of interest.
Well, I looked at your policy, and I saw nothing of even worth commenting on. So that's my comment. That's your comment. Is there anything else that you have?
No, I, so when we're making up these things and making rules and articles, I have it right here. I'll drop it off tomorrow, so you can get a copy of it.
Is there anyone else?
Because you didn't, hey, you did the same thing. Unethical conduct.
Anyone else, public comment?
Yes, this is Carol Gates calling you out on the unethical conduct of the Town Amendment. You have a policy that is in the town record. Signed, bye.
Richard Wilcox and Scott Bradley on 6/10/2019.
This is on register with the Town Amendment.
Yeah. I have no comment on what Scott Bradley did.
Of course. Nobody ever has any comment on things that you guys do. You all cover your own. You cover each other.
All right. We're done with comments. Anyone else? Wait a minute, I just lost everybody. Okay. Okay. We're down to business. And again, after each item on the agenda, it will be open for public comment. The first one is a recap of the Government Day in Montpelier. That's for Communication Union Districts. And Mendon is a member of the Otter Creek Communication Union District, and I represent Mendon on the Otter Creek Communication Union District Board of Directors. I'm also on their executive committee, and I represent Otter Creek Communication District on the state governing board, which is called RACUDA, Vermont Communication Union District Association. We were up there at the state capitol in the House of Representatives recently, January 31st, 2023. And they read the resolution. It's called HCR 21. "House Concurrent Resolution Honoring the Organizations and Individuals Working to Resolve Vermont's Rural Broadband Access Prices." Having been adopted in concurrence of Friday, the 27th, 2023, in accord with Joint Rule 16D, was read. The Otter Creek Communication Union District, the public entity serving the Rutland region, is working to help local residents with internet connectivity challenges. We're creating a plan to bring high-speed internet to all unserved premises in the area over the course of the next few years. In the meantime, we're working to help Vermonters get connected right now. And again, there is absolutely no expense to the Town Amendment at all. Any funds for this will be whoever hicks up to that last mile fiber optic high-speed internet. All right. So that's the day in Montpelier. A little expensive, but that's okay. ARPA, last meeting Seth asked for an update on Bill Ellis's request at the Town Garage regarding the water filtration system. I did get on and meet with Bill and asked him if he could prioritize that, and I pretty much got what Bill gave us before. Is that they have a filter system now, and they use a 5-micron filter. They don't use much water, basically for the toilet and for washing equipment. We do have a cost that Bill gave us for the, if I can find it here, for the filtration system. So in answer to your question, Seth, I really can't get a prioritization from Bill as to where this serves. He just gave me the information I just gave you. You know, we've all seen the water filter at different times. I think that comes out neighborhood, has that same type of water, looks like iron.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Larry, that's good with me.
Some that Bill has given us, the new filtration system would be around $1,400. So I don't know if that, it doesn't help you at all, but it's just hard to get Bill to prioritize that. And I also asked him on an update on the structure over the diesel tank. We know that's required by code from the Agency of Natural Resources. We have approved that last month, January 2023. We had an estimate around $5,000. Not sure where that came from. Bill has not reached out and actually gotten a price for doing that. Uh, so he said he would get on it, and so that one's kind of on hold. That $5,000 may be right on, maybe too much, or may not be enough, so we're waiting on that. While we're on ARPA, Sarah has sent out the ARPA-funded projects updated January 17th, 2023. We've gone down through, and what we have approved comes to $129,285. Our total fund is $347,045. We have yet to, and we're going at this very cautiously to make sure we cover anything that'll benefit the town first before we reach out to other organizations that have asked for money. So so far, the first thing we purchased were the folding chairs for town meeting. That came in at 1456. The old software is in the town office, and it looks like it's hitched up. We had estimated $1,000 for that. I'm not sure what the actual is on that yet. The politicization of land records, we've approved that last month. We approved $50,000 for that, and that process is going to be an ongoing process. We also, part of our budget under highway improvement, we added, and this again was last month, $50,000 out of ARPA to put into that fund. The town office generator, as you see on your notes, we're still awaiting the grant award. That's a 50%. But we have approved $15,000 towards that. Hopefully, we only need to use half of that, but until we get that award grant, we're still waiting on that. That was approved January 2023. The new playground structure at the recreation area, we have approved that last month. That was $50,000. I sent an email out to the members of the Recreation Committee, letting them know that that award is sitting there, that funds are sitting there. And then the remaining funds for that playground structure would either come from the reserve funds, or there are grant opportunities to help pay for that. The money needs to be allocated by the end of December of 2024, and it needs to be spent by the end of December 2026, so there's plenty of time on that. Also, not on here, but I mentioned just as a possibility, it's gonna be passed on to the new Select Board members to save some money for kind of for cushioning. Some of these projects may come in a little bit over. But also, if you get into a situation a year from now, well, actually before a year from now, where to get the budget down to a reasonable amount, you could actually use some ARPA funds and put it towards like a paving or something like that to reduce that. Again, waiting for the structure of the diesel tank. I'll keep hammering Bill for that one. He knows who he's gonna call to get an estimate. The swinging doors in the office, we approved that of September of 2022. And the estimate and the actual came in the same. So total committed is $1,072,200, rather, $172,200. And then looking down at other projects, the vault upgrades, the estimate is $15,000. These are things yet to be approved. Humidity control, we're waiting. I need to talk to Nancy on that, because she ordered a new humidifier, dehumidifier, excuse me. The last thing you want is humidity. Cybersecurity, Nancy's working on that, because there's grant money out there for that, so that's on hold. And then we have the town garage, storage shed. There's no estimate on that. Town garage, water system was $1,400. That looks like it's gonna fall on us. Additional garage bay was $10,000. We haven't approved any of this. And salt shed expansion at $250,000. So obviously, these projects are out there, the amount of money that we have. Also, there was talk, and I don't set, asked some questions about a garage, our generator for the town garage. Again, knowing what the cost would be for the town office, a similar generator would be around $15,000. We have two other community project requests. Again, we're kind of waiting to see what portion of these we might fund until we get all these estimates and know where we stand. Those two are East Ridge Acre Backup Generator. That's backup power for their water system. They requested $12,645. And the Barstow School Courts Project requested $50,000. So those, again, some of these things are on hold until we lock down some of these other costs. Also, what we're added under reserve fund balances, those were sent out to us. We have 13 reserve funds. These are part of the budget that's proposed or put before the voters at town meeting. And so Sarah kind of guided us toward looking at the new office equipment. The ending balance as of June 30th, 2022 was $25,609. You know, I don't know if this is tying into possibly using some ARPA money on to put into these funds. That's gonna fall on you two and plus Lisa. Under restoration and preservation, the ending balance on that, I have two figures here. It's $52,057, and underneath in smaller print was $51,697.
That is the correct amount, 51.
Go ahead.
The 51,697 is the correct amount.
And I think you did send that out to us. And then the last one, the garage maintenance reserve fund, the balance on that as of June 30th, 2021 is $115,709. All right. So I'll open this up to our Select Board members, any further information they're looking for, or any comments? So who wants, anyone wants to start on that?
Larry, may I make a couple comments on some of the projects?
Hey, thank you.
So regarding the vault upgrades, I thought you had told me that that was approved, but I don't see that it was. The roller shelving is not imminent, but we definitely need to do something about the map cabinet, because our map cabinet is full. The dehumidifier that we ordered seems to be doing a really good job, so I don't think we're actually gonna be looking for any ARPA funds for that. And cybersecurity, as you mentioned, I am looking at them right now, in the process of trying to get a quote for a consultant to tell us what we need to do so that we can apply for the grant through VLCT. So those are my comments on ARPA projects for right now.
And your comments, Nancy, I thought we approved vault upgrades in the amount of $15,000. I'm just looking at our ARPA-funded projects, again dated January 17th, 2023.
Yeah, I think you told me that you had, but Sarah said there was no motion.
Okay, all right.
So.
All right, we can handle that. Um, cybersecurity, you addressed that. So that takes care of you for now then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so open up for discussion. Uh, we'll start with, uh, either, uh, start with Val.
Um, I'm in favor of the, um, improving the water system in the garage, at the garage.
Okay. And how about the vault upgrades?
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead.
No, absolutely.
All right, so vault upgrades in the filtration system at the town garage. All right, Seth, your turn.
Uh, yes, Larry, I agree with Val. I'm in, I'm in favor of both of those as well.
All right, and I'll open it up to the public, uh, on ARPA funds.
Just on, from the recreation committee concerning, um, proposals for new play equipment. I have to get in touch with Liam to look out the exact square footage of that property. I believe he had it in one of his other proposals because one of the other companies needs that information. And I should have at least two poses for that.
Okay, uh, again, um, we have, or everyone really has until the end of December twenty twenty-six, so there's plenty of time. Um, I know in previous discussions regarding playground equipment, at the time we were talking about it, there was the supply chain issues. And ordering a, and Lisa, if you remember, a playground structure, it was a year out before you would actually receive it. Does that make, does that sound right?
Uh, yes, but the two companies that I'm talking with, actually three now, um, they said they could have it starting building by June.
Oh.
So that's like a six month, five, five and a half months out.
All right, so it sounds like Liam needs to, uh, at some point call a recreation committee meeting. I'll, I'll remind him, uh, to see how we can get started on this.
All right, thank you.
Lisa, I, I have a quick question. Um, do either of these companies remove the old structure?
Um, I didn't ask, but can ask them and I'm sure they will. I mean, it doesn't take much, it's, you know, either a dollar amount more or, um, I know at one point they were saying, um, the recreation committee was saying something about possibly selling it.
Ah.
Which I don't know if town, you know, that we'd have to check to see if that, the town can do that.
Sounds like a liability to me.
Thank you.
You're right.
You're welcome.
Have to check with the LCT, uh, see how that works. And the new playground structure is actually not going where the existing one is. It would be going at the end of the, um, the basketball, pickleball court, right in that area. All right, so it sounds like we have a consensus. Um, so I'll make a motion to allocate ARPA funds, ARPA funds towards, uh, vault upgrades. Um, again, that's, uh, map cabinets and roller shelving in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And to approve the town garage water system, filtration system in the amount of one thousand, four hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, the next one is the fireworks and burn permit ordinance. Um, this is kind of falling in the hands of, um, well, depends, there's two different ordinances here, uh, of getting these tweaked and updated, uh, especially the burn permit ordinance is dated. It needs to be coordinated, I don't think Seth, Lemmy, uh, Seth and Lemmy and Sarah working on the fireworks. Uh, Fred has given us some updates. And then also the burn permit, uh, Seth is going to be working on that, uh, with Sarah, uh, just to get those all coordinated. I don't think there's any updates or any more work than done on those, Seth. If not, we'll just table this. Are we any closer?
Yeah, sorry, Larry. Um, I, I haven't been able to speak with Lars. He was out of the office. Um, but he will be, uh, I will be contacting him and speaking with him again soon. And I've been working on some of that stuff, but we're going to have to revisit it, I think, the next meeting.
Okay, all right, we'll table that for the next meeting. All right, now we're down to under this, this zoning administrator signs and Frank Bagley, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Larry. Um, at, at the last meeting, I raised the, uh, the, the question of what the town's ability and liabilities were if the town elected to remove, uh, commercial signage that are in violation of our town zoning regs. And, um, at your suggestion, I contacted Vermont League of City and Towns to explore that further. And I, I trust all of you got copies of those responses. I provided them to Sarah. But, yeah, I wrote to, uh, I can summarize, I, I hate to read their responses, um, Larry, but I contacted them on January twenty-sixth. I got a response two days later from Garrett Baxter, the senior staff attorney, um, at VLCT. And he said, um, in, in his, uh, response that essentially as long as the town is following, uh, the literal interpretation of the regulations, that the town does have the legal right with proper notification and, and, um, you know, finishing the appeals process and so forth, um, to go on private property to remove, um, a, a sign which is, uh, in violation. He suggested, in addition though, that I contact the insurance carrier or the, their staff person who is their insurance liaison. And that's, that person Kelly Noteck responded on January thirtieth saying that, um, if, that the advice, she felt the advice the attorney gave was excellent. As long as you follow that guidance, you've done everything to ensure the best outcome. If the ordinance is clear, it's in, in its enforcement language. Uh, she says, we do understand from time to time municipalities need to take action to enforce ordinances and regulations. If all appropriate actions are taken, we can, the town can still be sued. But in that case, um, the, whatever PACIF is, I think that must be their insurance carrier or something.
Yes.
Would respond, um, and would help to support the, the town's expenses or whatever if the town were sued by the private property owner. So I, um, I hope you got all that in writing. Um, none of this is, none of these situations are imminent. Um, I am in conversation with one of the, um, commercial property owners whose sign has been in violation for more than a year. I'm sorry, uh, it's been in violation for several years. He was noticed of the violation more than a year ago. And I'm working with him on a, in a way to ameliorate the issue. And he seems to be cooperative and, and, um, ultimately interested in developing the property. The, um, the other property which is in violation is, uh, owned by somebody in Minnesota. Uh, the letter to their address, uh, was returned without a forwarding address. We subsequently obtained a different Minnesota address and he's been noticed, um, of the existing violation and asked to explain what his intent is. So I, I don't anticipate moving in the next two weeks on this, Larry, or requesting any further input, uh, from the town or town staff or having to hire somebody. But, um, in the, in the zoning administrator's job description, it does say that the zoning administrator shall literally and strictly enforce town regulations. So, um, I just, um, so you know, I, I did get that, that, that legal and insurance perspective information that you requested, something to study. And I'll, I'll keep you posted as to the, the status of whether I think we have to call in the town to do something.
And, and you're right, yeah, the enforcement of this is the zoning administrator. You, you've got that. And then the select board just gets involved uh, on the financial end of this. Um, and then if the town crew was going to do that, they would probably have to go through us. Um, so these violations, are there, are there fines that are ongoing for these? Or how, how does that fine structure work?
Um, Yeah, both, both, both of these, these signs, the violation, a notice was issued over a year ago. Even at, uh, the lowest level, you know, twenty bucks a day or something, that's several thousand dollars in fines. But, um, it, because there was no follow-up by the zoning administrator at that time, obviously no fines have been assessed. But both parties have been noticed that if we can't come to an agreement um, as to what their course of action is, then I would have little choice but to notify them again and then, uh, level some sort of a fine. They then have to appeal to the ZBA. If the ZBA supports it, um, then, you know, the fines continue every day as a new violation, that sort of thing. But I think I can get around that, um, and, and work with these property owners. But, um, if, if all else fails, I, I see the little alternative but to come back to you and request that you ask the town road crew to help take apart these signs.
Okay, I'm just writing down some notes on the different levels of, of questions here. Um, you answered the one on fines. Um, just saying, it, what, doesn't matter if the road crew did it or, or if a contractor did it. Uh, there's a cost involved, whether to the town or, or if a contractor does it. Um, eventually, I'm, I'm guessing this has to be paid for by the property owner, not the taxpayers in Mendon. Um, if a contractor did it, uh, we'd have to get a, a quote on it. Uh, make sure they have the proper insurance, you know, a regular policy on, on hiring a contractor, uh, number of quotes to see what it comes out to. At any point, um, just take any one of those individual signs, um, you get an estimate for that. Um, just say it somewhere in the four figures. Do you go back to the property owner and say, you know, you're in violation? Here's what it's going to cost to take this sign down properly? Uh, giving you another chance to do it yourself? Or make sure you know that, uh, this amount is going to fall on you? And then the start is, is, you know, the, the whole thing with, um, you know, finding out if, if electrical is running to this, these signs, um, you know, your contractor would have to get an electrician in there. I'm sure the electrician's going to have to go into the building at some point. Um, make sure that wire is pulled on the panel so nobody happens to turn that breaker on. Um, and then do we need, and this would be a research, uh, an easement? Or some kind of right of way to actually get onto this property? Um, I mean, these things keep popping up and I, I don't have, you know, access to the building. You could need that if there is electrical. Yes, I don't know. I just, that's just my question. It's a lot, a lot of research. We've never done this.
We've never, we've never done it, um, for sure and, um, I'm, I'm not dying to be the first. But, um, we, it, as part of our, you know, larger effort to have our regulations respected and, and, uh, and, uh, conformed to. Um, as I say, I'm working aggressively with one of the property owners and I, I do believe that one I can solve without having to, um, you know, go to this extent. The, the, uh, the party that lives in Minnesota that doesn't respond to letters, um, you know, you have to go through certified mail, et cetera, et cetera. And, and, um, it, it's going to be a, a, a long drawn out process that I hope to miss, mitigate and, you know, not have to pursue. But I'll certainly, I'll certainly keep you posted. Um, and there, there's nothing pending in the next couple of weeks.
All right, and in your conversations, I mean, I'm, again, this is a zoning administrator process, not the select board. But are, are they aware that the cost to take the signs down, uh, is their responsibility? Or they will be invoiced? Or am I wrong? Is, I'm not, I'm not sure who gets invoiced with it.
Yeah, in, in the original notice of violation that went out over a year ago, a, a copy of the, um, of our pertinent regulations was, uh, fixed to the letters. And, um, those letters were received, i.e. they, you know, did not, they, they did not come back undelivered. And, um, the cover letter at the time, um, um, emphasized the, that fines will be assessed.
Uh, okay, fines, but not the actual cost of taking the sign down?
Yeah, sorry, and, and fines and, and the cost would, would be passed on. And, and then as, as you know, because zoning administrators rolled through there for a while, um, there, I believe there were some phone conversations which are not recorded in the, in the written record or the email record that I can find. There might have been some phone conversations about, um, empty promises. We'll get to it, we'll get to it, we'll get to it. And, um, it just hasn't happened.
All right, well, keep us in the loop. Um, you know, again, if, if it has to go out to dead, um, you know, we would require the insurance, workers comp and the whole thing in case there's property damage. Uh, but yeah, just, just give us an update when you have more information.
I would, yeah, and no news is good news. It means that I've got a resolution without having to come back to you.
Larry, excuse me, Brian has his hand raised. He has a question for you or on this subject, I believe.
So why don't we send the sheriff and a constable over with handguns drawn to give him a violation like you did to me?
Uh,
No comment on that, huh?
I, I don't know who the question was directed to, um.
Well, it was, I guess it was to you, Fred. So usually, you know, you have the ability to send the sheriff over with his, with his guns drawn with the sheriff. Because that's what the town did to me over some motion detector lights. And they didn't wait a year. They did it in seven days.
Yeah, well, I, I, that's obviously it was a different zoning administrator. Uh, Brian, I can't, I can't comment on that, not to mention the fact that these parties are a thousand miles away that I'm trying to deal with long distance, so I, I can't comment.
It could be the same. The, the laws are the same for everybody. It sounds like they're actually getting a little extra by you giving them phone calls, you know, and giving them chances and all that. The town never did that for me for the last two and a half years. Sounds like we have a lot of conflicts of interest and ethical conduct violations, which are granted in twenty-four BSA two-two-nine-one-twenty of the town of Mendon hereby adopts the following policy concerning conflicts of interest and ethical conduct. You can look that up, uh, Larry. Twenty-four BSA two-two-nine-one-twenty. Adopted by the town, June of two thousand nineteen. By Dick Wilcox. By Dick Wilcox and Scott Bradley.
Thank you.
So why don't we just send somebody over there with some guns drawn and threaten and intimidate them?
You know, it's a limited amount of time that we have you, but we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you too, Larry. You don't remember what to say or do, do you?
Did you mute him? Derek's trying to talk. Thank you. Town meeting presentation. So we have a warning that's been sent out to us. Again, it's going to be at the V-Trans building, 61 Valley View here in Mendon. This is a repressure that town meeting is not a select board meeting. It is obviously a town meeting. It is run by the moderator. He will stay right on the articles. So as far as presentation, and we seem to know, the only thing going down through that we even would begin to comment would be Article 2, which is the municipal budget. Anything after that really doesn't involve us, but we probably should plan on some presentations so everyone gets a hand in this. Nancy and I have talked about kind of teaming up and doing a BCA report. There's really no place on the warning for other business. Nancy, I'm not sure where we fill that in, or the moderator would ask if there's any other business regarding the warning.
I think we could do it under budget, Larry, where, because we'll be talking about the costs of it probably.
Okay, so.
If you'd like. And there is going to be a blurb in the town report, too.
Yeah, yeah. All right. And then maybe Seth is, is our fire warden. I don't know where we are at that point as far as the burn permit ordinance. It's always a good thing to remind people the importance of getting a permit. They're free, they're easy to get. The instructions are on their town website. The reason for that is really simple. If someone gets a permit and does it right, and they're free, then the fire warden will send a copy of that permit down to the City of Rutland Fire Department. And the dispatcher is going to have that sitting on his desk. The day of the burn, someone sees smoke. And doing their Good Samaritan thing, they call the fire department, dial 911. And say, I see smoke at such and such a location. The dispatcher is going to look down and say, yep, there's a burn permit there. We're all good. I have a contact number here. And they know the instructions on the burn permit, that if the fire gets out of control, that they will call the fire department. Thank you for calling. We're good to go. They do not have to dispatch a fire truck and the town will not be invoiced $750. The other scenario is someone burns without a permit. Same scenario, someone calls it in, a neighbor calls it in for some reason, whatever. The dispatcher does not have anything. They have to send a fire truck and the town is invoiced $750 for that truck to move. And then we have to try and go and collect that from the person responsible or the property owner. So it's as simple as that. That's the reason we have the burn permit. That's the reason they're free and they're very easy to follow instructions and get. So I don't know, Seth, if you just want to repeat that again at our town meeting, but we still have issues once in a while.
Absolutely, Larry. I think that's a great idea and I, and I can do that, no problem.
Right. I know you're only here for a few meetings, but yeah, I want to give you something to do. And then we're going to have, as we're all aware, some recognition to do. Something we can all get together and write up and vouch that's something you want to do. Or if you can think of something else, I'm just looking for things for us, for everyone, just to have some kind of a part in this. You know, I'll do the budget.
The recognition is fine, Larry.
What's that?
The recognition is fine.
Okay, all right. We'll work on that. You know, we're going to have, well, we don't, we're going to have a lot with Gary Seeler and a few others. So, okay. And that'll kind of, so that handles the budget. The BCA report, that would be Nancy and I. Recognitions is Val. And burn ordinance, Seth will give an update is where that happens to be at the time along with the importance of getting a burn permit. Again, we will look at this again in our last meeting. Excuse me, my last meeting. February 27, 2023. All right, so that takes care of C. Town report has been sent to us. Again, this is a town report for 2022. We've got to go back a few months, plus 12 months. And highlights and objectives. Sarah has asked us for any comments, updates, corrections. If you could read over the highlights and objectives. If you see anything in there, if you want to comment on any corrections, Sarah needs those by this coming Wednesday.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Could you please actually get them to her by tomorrow afternoon if you can? Because it's going to take me some time to put the town report into PDF format. And I know we want to get that done before the mailings go out.
So as Nancy's request, any corrections or whatever edits, get them to Sarah tomorrow. Or you can send her an email saying you don't find anything. The only thing I saw under hazard mitigation plan update, it says, once adopted by the select board, the town will seek regional planning commission approval. I contacted Stephanie Burke today. We're going to remove that because it does not require regional planning commission. It requires only approval by FEMA. And then also, last page, it talked about people that have been with us positions they've had, positions they've stepped down on from. And then one says Marie Conway chose not to run for reelection. Then the last sentence, Marie Conway did not run for reelection as Justice of the Beach, so we can cross out that Marie Conway does not run for reelection because it's covered in the last sentence. That's all I had and I'll send those out to Sarah. If you have any, send them or even if you're fine with them, just let her know. You're fine. And now I'll open up to the public for town meeting presentations. Any comments on town meeting presentations? Uh, excuse me, town report 2022. Highlights and objectives. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to constable training and the VLCT scholarship. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns has a training scholarship that we can apply for, to pay for. Mimi Carter's training that was approved at the last meeting. Note, we wanted you to be aware of it and that this scholarship would alleviate the demand on the continuing education budget. And there's no need for action by the select board at this time. Nancy, I think you're going to do that and I just stole your thunder. Sorry.
That's, that's quite all right. So this, it's called the John Law Scholarship. And it's a scholarship that VLCT puts out to enhance safety and risk management skills of municipal employees. And they'll pay anywhere between $100 and $500 per person. So what happens is you just apply to them and if they find that it meets their criteria, then they would just pay up to $500 towards that training.
All right, thank you. And again, that was for information only.
Yes.
Local hazard mitigation plan adoption. That is for us to make a motion on this evening. And for me to sign and then Nancy will sign it. This is a requirement every five years from FEMA. We started this process April of last year. And went through meeting at least once a month with Stephanie Burke from Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And then we had our meetings in between with just the committee. FEMA kind of sets up the whole process and that's why it takes so long. There's just no way of rushing through this, which we kind of wanted to do, but it's not allowed. Again, the local hazard mitigation plan is to provide a natural hazard, local mitigation strategy that makes Mendon more disaster resistant and more resilient after disaster. Hazard mitigation is any sustained policy or action that reduces or eliminates long-term risk to people and property from natural hazards and their effects. FEMA and state agencies have come to recognize that it is less expensive to prevent disasters than to repeatedly repair damage after disaster has struck. This plan recognizes that communities have opportunities to identify mitigation strategies and measures during all other phases of emergency management. Preparedness, response, and recovery hazards cannot be eliminated. But it is possible to determine what the hazards are, where the hazards are most severe, and identify local actions and policies that can be implemented to reduce the severity of the hazard. So on that LHMP team, along with myself, with Fred Bagley, representing the Amendment Planning Commission, Mimi Carter, our Amendment Constable and Emergency Management Director, Bill Ellis, our Road Commissioner, and Justin Lindholm, also from the Amendment Planning Commission. And we had technical assistance from Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and that was Stephanie Burke. That being said, I'll make a motion for the chair to sign the certificate of adoption, a resolution adopting the Mendon-Vermont 2022 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Just a very second.
One second now, Larry.
Thank you, Seth. Any further discussion? Is there any comments from the public regarding the LHMP adoption? Seeing none, we have a motion in second. All those in favor of the adoption of the local hazard mitigation plan, please say aye.
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 Sounds unanimous. Any apologies to check? Seeing none, motion passes. All right, the last item on our agenda. As you know, we went through and had Mendon on the move, out of Mendon on the move. Came a section regarding a, having a stumping study of Route 4 through the town amendments of the village district and the commercial district. We received, applied for and received federal money in the amount of, I won't go into the amount yet. And then we also had a match. We had to match that. So the committee has been working on this project and they're using at the ready, which is a list of contractors from V-Trans who are pre-approved because they've worked successfully for a number of years in completing projects with V-Trans all over the state of Vermont. And we have, working with, we did a selection process and came up with a preferred contractor. It was a close one. We're working with that, but we've come in. Their proposal, excuse me, is over budget. And so because it's a contract, we'll have to go into executive session to discuss this because the information cannot get out to another contractor should we select one. So motion to go into an executive session at 6:09 PM. The select board finds that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. Motion to enter an executive session to discuss contracts for T1 BSA 313 1 (A) at a time specific with members present.
Second thought. Larry, I think you want to name the members that you want present in this executive session.
It would be along with myself, Val Taylor, Seth Bridge, and Nancy Gundt.
So everyone else, I will excuse you from the meeting and if you want to join back in after executive session, that would be fine.
So we need any time.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
You too.
So I made the motion, Seth, excuse me, Val has seconded. All those in favor of the motion to executive session to move the contract, say aye.
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 Sounds unanimous. We are now in executive session. Thank you.
Okay, I have excused everyone. Caller one, that's you, Larry, and Seth is on a call. I'm going to stop the recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
The chair states that we are out of executive session at 6:24 PM. And no decisions were made in executive session. And our next meeting, February 27 at 5:00 PM. Is anything else in the select board?
No.
Seth is back on?
Nope. I think we lost him.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:25 PM.
Thank you. A second thought.
Val's second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.